Yep, the new computer says four thirty. Meeting will come to order. Roll call.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Bunting.
Present.
Commissioner Gay.
Here.
Commissioner Sapsy.
Here.
Commissioner Owens.
Here. George, can you get us?
Raise your heads please. Most gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day that you've given to us and the moisture, Father, that we desperately need. We ask, Father, you be with us tonight as we deliberate for the folks of Gresham County. We also ask that you be with the servicemen and women serving overseas and at home. And also all of our first responders, Father, give them safety. We also ask, Father, that you continue to see. Safeties for the farmers, they're still have got many crops in, but there's a few left and we just. Hope that they've had a bountiful harvest and that they'll have a great fall. We ask all these things, Father, in your son's precious name, amen.
Amen. You join us for the pledge. Oh, we want to add Tony to the. Add a new business.
J one.
J one. Everybody else should get moved down.
And then we are canceling the public hearing that we had scheduled for the brown. Field redevelopment and for that three eleven East Superior Street that will be scheduled at a later time.
Okay. Thank you.
Where was that at? Which one is it?
Three eleven East Superior Street.
Oh, it's not on their agenda.
Oh, it's not on agenda, it's just. We had had it scheduled and they canceled it. I'd move the agenda as presented.
Worked. Moved by George for advice Steve to. Approve the agenda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Who's nay? Public comment. A consideration of the consent calendar.
So move that we. Prove the consent calendar is presented.
Moved by Steve, supported by George to approve the consent calendar, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Who's nay? Motion carried. Ministries report.
All right, um. Update for the commission. I've got Tony Miller from uh. Building of grounds supervisor working very hard to line up a bunch of projects coming up yet this fall. The idea is to get bids in for as many of these as possible. Uh depending on where we fall with our ARP funds so that we can fund those projects right into the last few dollars that we have for that. Um he's looking at several of the mechanical uh water pumps that are aged out forty years old that need to be replaced. We had one of them freeze up on us. This last year which wreaked havoc with our air conditioning system, so he's identified where all of these. Uh nuances are throughout the courthouse and he's having people come in and give bids on them. Uh one of his other priorities for this fall, he's looking at uh having a. A billion in storage unit built between the sheriff's office and the courthouse there where those sick pine trees were that we took down. Um. As you know, our tractor and mowers, they're not stored here on campus, they're stored at the drain commission. So it is difficult for our employees to go down and get those, especially when it's snowing at five o'clock in the morning. Um. Uh unfortunately, uh we worked very hard, as you know, to get a federal grant for our new airport terminal building. Uh in the last couple of weeks, we were notified that that grant application was denied. We have our engineering firm. Getting feedback from everybody on the grant application uh so that we can shore it up and resubmit it for next year. Um next year will be the last year of this FAA program, so we have our fingers crossed. Um. We did.
They sent a lot of it to Gerald R Ford.
Yes, yes, they did, they sent it to Grand Rapids, um they're the last of the larger hubs in Michigan that did not receive a large piece of the pie. Uh sent a bunch to Lansing, every year in Detroit gets.
What got some.
Bishop got a. So.
Those seem like Democrat cities.
It's impossible.
Um Joe Biden has just bought property and he's building something in St. Louis on state road. And I got a picture of a sign that says um. I can't remember the meaning of it, but it says um by by President Joe Biden. And they've put a, they've been putting the ground down and RVing it. And other than that, and they've got pipes they've just brought in, so it must be some kind of a building.
Second for interrupting Chris.
Um. Bit of good news though, I can say now that uh our last turbine depreciation. Lawsuit has been settled, all parties have signed up. It is a confidential agreement, so if you would like to see. We have looked at it in closed session, it is what you expect, we could go back into a closed session, or you can visit me in the office. If you'd like to go over any details on that. Um. Today we had uh several individuals interviewed at Central Dispatch, I'm told that the people that were interviewed, uh the director was very happy with, so expect some offers to be going out for them soon. Outside of that, I don't think we have anything posted outside of the sheriff's office at this moment. Um but shortly, we will be uh um. I'm gonna just go ahead and scratch that last one right there, um. I did get an email from MSU Extension, uh they do an annual needs assessment project. Uh survey that goes out to each of the individual commissioners and it goes to myself, uh filled it out this last week. They asked me to urge each of you to fill that out, so I'm fulfilling that request.
With an email to it?
Yes, it would have come.
Probably deleted it.
Would have come from Eric Walcott. So.
From the side.
And it did go to some of your secondary emails. Gmail Yahoo that some of you prefer to use.
When did he send that?
I got this on uh October thirty first.
I might not have.
I've been deleting my, all my emails, I've got so much junk coming in.
Nice, that concludes my report.
Okay, George, what do you got for?
What do you? Oh my, well, I went to uh Burke and Ridge for their village meeting. Their uh Michigan, Michigan State in their park was well attended, it's eighty some people. Had a good time. And so that was a success. Uh we also talked uh in depth about Cooper's Corners. And people in Burke and Ridge are not happy. And uh I believe that Nan Clapp. Was the one that signed the um. New Blaine. Complaint. So that should be moving through the system, so hopefully we'll get somewhere on that. Um. Health department. Can't remember now if there's anything earth shattering, no, I know our. The doctor wasn't there, she had a conference.
Yep.
Had to be at. So I don't, and everything else was basically normal, there wasn't anything, no hires, no nothing, so it's basically basic meeting. That's all I got.
Tim? I didn't go anywhere. Um. My township meetings are next week.
Yeah. Most of ours are, I guess, Steve?
Um health department, I just, when you said there were no hires, remember they did do one, they rehired somebody.
The rehire.
Uh there was a. Breastfeeding coach.
Yeah, the nurse.
Worked and that was their part time, they had an opening. And this person wants to come back now and they rehired somebody, so that was our one.
Yeah.
It was like our one official thing of business with the doctor being gone and everything else was pretty. We talked about septic code and they're on what, version nine or ten now?
Yeah, they're unversion nine.
We'll know a whole bunch more after tomorrow night, how much stuff, if there's gonna be a lame, true lame duck session and. If there's. I talked to a buddy of mine that works there today and he said they've literally been carrying stacks of bills across, so. If things don't go the right way.
Lame duck and there's.
Be a pilot off. Could be a.
Well, they got the one, currently they had the majority, so that's what's.
That's what I'm saying, they got it, so they'll be. Be busy.
Yep.
Lord Elvis. Jan?
Um yes, I had one meeting with Alma City Hall, it was a short meeting. And um. I left him with my brochure that I'm running and just a real short meeting, I think it was like less than. Maybe forty minutes, I think it was, or less.
Oh, good.
It's that time of the year.
On the seventeenth, they had the brownfield redevelopment meeting, didn't last too long. We got another one Wednesday. And on the eighteenth, Greater Gresham. Had a meeting. Nothing earth is shattering there. That's all I got. Okay, consideration of new business, Tony.
Sorry about the confusion on the, I thought it was on the agenda, but. Um we put out for. Snowplow bids this year again. And uh we only had one interested party, it's the same um young man that did it for us last year. The prices haven't changed. Um I contacted a couple of um companies that had done it in the past. No interest at all, so. Um his prices, like I say, have stayed the same from last year, we were happy with him. He's been mowing the landfill, um hauling stuff out at the airport, helping us with some other projects as well, so. So I'm here to get. It's uh cutting edge outdoor solutions, Dakota Lebrack's the kid's name, the young man's name. You know, and he lives right here in Ithaca, he's a local.
What are the details for the cost?
What was that?
What are the details for the cost?
Uh it's basically based on a per push, so we're looking at animal control. At seventy dollars, uh the health department's a hundred dollars a push. The jail parking lot out here was a hundred and ten. Um the handicap circle was sixty. Um church was seventy, there's a little bit at the drain. And that was fifty dollars. And then salting all other properties was about eighty five dollars event, so it's all the same as last year. We were happy with them, we were, it was tough a couple of times last year because it didn't start snowing until seven thirty. Right when everybody was getting here, seemed like it snowed on us, the two or three major ones that we got last year.
Road commission does applaud the lot.
Oh, no.
They do theirs, but there's a.
Hit that line.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, they have done it in the past, but we we can't really just assume that they're gonna do it for us, so we need to make the arrangements. But.
I'd go ahead and make a motion that we would uh. Enter into agreement with outdoor solutions to plow the snow this winter on all the. How many properties?
Second.
Moved by George, supported by Tim, to enter into a snowplow contract. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Who's nay? Motion carried.
You sign this, I'll get it taken care of. Want to review it?
I can get it to you in the morning, Tim.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. County drain at large.
Every year, um. The county general fund makes a payment uh to pay down debt. To the. Drain commissioner's office. Similar to the tax, you know, that tax assessment. Uh the county is responsible for ten percent of the county drain bills uh throughout the county, each and every one of them. Uh for years and years, twenty, thirty years. We would uh always just borrow the money to to pay this ten percent. Uh in the last five years, this board has made an effort to start paying this debt down and to start prepaying. Uh some of these loans, that's why I bring these drain prepayment amounts to you a couple of times a year. Um. Our annual payment for this fiscal year is budgeted uh and has been approved by this board of a hundred and sixty six thousand dollars. Um what caught my eye, it was a little bit different this time, was the payoff amount. In past years, uh payoff amounts have always been. Uh between one and three million dollars, but as we start continuing to whittle this down. Our payoff amount is four hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars, which is something that uh. Is possible for the county to pay off this year, if we would like to get out of that. With the drain commissioner. So I am asking this board if they would be interested in using our fund balance to pay off the debt that we have with the drain commissioner.
Think it's very. Sensible to do, saves us interest, I mean, you're. We, yeah, I mean, we we had it. You know, uh. It's a surplus of money, but you know what I mean, we came in under budget, so I think this is a logical place to get rid of some debt that we have the money to do without causing us any other kind of financial strain, so.
That would be my recommendation, if you were looking at, um you know, if you remember. Five years ago, the audit firm stood here and said that this is starting to get out of control, we should consider.
Let it go its flow.
Remediating this issue, and I don't think they would have ever expected that within five years it would be completely paid.
We we've got, we've got finances in the fund balance and I, I agree with Steve that we should cut that down.
I saw move that we. Pay off the Gresham County Drain Commission debt to the tune of four hundred and eighty seven thousand, six hundred and sixty five dollars and sixty one cents. Completing or totally paying off the debt.
I commit. Moved by Steve, supported by George to pay off.
Tim, excuse me.
Pay off the remaining drain debt.
And we also amend the drain at large budget line. By the same amount.
Yep.
Or not by the same amount, but by the increase.
Yep. Do you need that exact figure of the increase amount?
Uh no, you could say.
Okay. I would also like to amend the drain at large budget to accommodate paying off the debt.
You go.
Okay, I'm still supported, Tim? Yes.
We should do a roll call on that.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner Sapsy.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Owens.
Yes. Gold for the debt. And that is.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you for bringing it to us to get rid of it.
Digital Ally contract.
All right. Digital Ally. Uh if you'll remember, Digital Ally came and presented to you, I believe it was back in August, August twentieth. Uh their body and dash camera products. Uh since then, um. I have. Kind of tested the support of the sheriff's office for this specific company. This company has uh partnered with Gresham County Sheriff's Office. Uh for the last fifteen years at least. Um and if they worked with them before that, it is possible, but the last fif- twelve to fifteen years. Uh they have serviced the current body and dash cameras. Uh despite the fact that they were. For the best. Are not serviceable anymore, parts are not available. But they knew that parts were not available, Digital Ally did, so they would store old devices. In a bad climate specifically for clients like us who were. Five, six, seven, ten years out of date with their equipment. Um. The sheriff, the undersheriff, uh the lieutenants, the whole command staff were very adamant that they wanted to stay with Digital Ally. Um we did a little bit of digging and. Uh their prices are uh right in line where they need to be uh with with other competing companies. But the stories that um. The sheriff and his staff have heard about some of these other companies, they would rather just stick with um. Stick with the company that they know that that will be standing by their side. And saying that, um they would like to. Execute the sole source clause because of this customer service that they, and relationship that they already have with them. Um I did attach two contracts, we have two options, we could pay upfront or we could pay over five years. Uh originally, the, there was a five or six percent discount for paying upfront. Well, they have offered that same discount to us over a five year period. Um so there isn't as much of an incentive to pay it upfront. Um.
Well, they'll keep our money and make interest on it then. That's the case.
I, I, I agree, um. So even though this entire amount was budgeted and capital improvements. If there, we only need to pay forty three thousand dollars a year for the next five years, let's.
Well, it's.
We're proven to do that.
Money in back in our pocket, so that'd be a.
Um.
Can you?
It's actually six thousand less after the first, the first year is the forty three, then it's thirty seven.
Right, yes, yep.
Spent all that money that we could have spent upfront, that's interest back in our pocket.
So knowing. That this would be the only contract that the sheriff would support. I did not put this out to bid for everybody because I didn't want them to go through the time and cost of doing it. Without being selected. Um so if you have any questions, uh the sheriff is also. Available to to help answer any questions that you do.
I was just. Thoroughly impressed when they came and showed us all the things that they could do with these cameras. And uh of course, me, I'm all about safety. And this. Number one would increase the safety of our patrol officers. Manyfold. And with the interface it has now with the systems, they don't have to do the work that they used to have to do. Also with the cars, it's the same way. Uh it's gonna save countless hours of downloading and read, it's just gonna save, and one feature that I liked. And I, correct me if I'm wrong. The. Uh prosecutor's office can upload these images. Right to their computers from the sheriff's office as they get them. So I mean, that's just, that's just so much time consuming and it's it's just an amazing thing, I was just, I just thought that was the coolest thing I ever saw in my life. So, you know, I'm all for it.
I would be shocked if, having sat through the presentations, several presentations, private one also, I'd be shocked if this didn't save. People, not just us, but people in the county. Up to forty hour of the work a week, I just.
Redaction and all kinds of stuff, I mean, that's the, those are the things you really gotta. Be, you know, the most concerned about, because that's huge time consuming, it's a pain in the ass to go through these things, but there's software in the. That makes it so they can actually redact the things out of them that need to be redacted for court and to release them for, you know, to the public, um.
So while this is a cloud product.
Mm hmm.
Just know that. Uh at the sheriff's office, we are not yet prepared to be able to utilize this, we still have to have um. Wifi access. But I'll, I'm not gonna speak for Matt, he's got it all planned out, he knows what he's gotta do, he's just waiting for that. Go do it, but we need strong enough wifi access in the parking lot.
A little like a download.
Stuff all upload.
So he's got time to get that done before they can deliver all this equipment.
Yes.
You don't know a lot about this. Wifi, because I, I'm sure it's secured, so other people can't get in there on it.
Absolutely.
Because you know, you sit outside the library and you know that you just, you can get on the library, people have done it for when COVID and all that, they go to places to get that. But I'm sure this is gonna be locked down so that they cannot get into it, right?
There's Gresham County gas and Gresham County secure.
Secure, yeah.
And I'm, I'm going to assume there's probably gonna be one more.
There.
Firewall that you have to get through before you can.
Now that would be my only worry is that.
Mm hmm.
All the things that go on in the world anymore.
Well, the prosecutor was going to bring her software request. To the board tonight, um but. Actually got caught up, so that will be coming soon and. These were.
Three AM together? Great.
So. Do you wanna? Motion on this then, and we'll wait on hers or?
We'll wait on hers, yes.
I saw move that we um approve the Digital Ally um. Quote to. The wind for me. For one hundred and ninety three dollars and seventy five, one hundred and ninety three, seventy five dollars and fifty two cents. For the um major update to the Gresham County Sheriff's Office. Uh. Both body cam and vehicle.
Be paid out.
First year and this is a final contract.
No, that's the total to be paid in. In increments of first year forty three thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars and eighty eight cents. And the remaining four years of thirty seven thousand, four hundred and thirty six dollars and sixteen cents totaling the same amount, one hundred and ninety three dollars. One hundred and ninety three thousand, seventy five dollars and fifty two cents. Got it up.
Moved by Steve, was supported by Tim. Yeah, we should have a roll call for for Digital Ally. For the body cam and dash cameras. A roll call.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner Sapsy.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunty.
Yes.
Commissioner Owens.
Yes. Okay. Looks like that's it for. Oil business.
That came through quickly.
Have any oil business? Not?
Then I would uh make a motion that we would close regular session and go into the airport meeting.
Yes. Second. Moved by George, supported by Tim. To leave the regular meeting and go into the airport meeting. If something, Chris, sir.
Well, I posted the financials on here, you'll see our cash balance at two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. Uh as soon as I saw that, I went down the hallway and re-requested that the million dollars from the general fund be transferred in so that. Uh the airport can start, or airport authority. Start generating interest on that, so that is done since this report was ran. Uh you'll see in the check activity, you know, we pay the EAA chapter, uh they do the mowing out there. Yeah, Carmen's Tree Service, that was the first, um. That was what they got done before uh ten, or yeah, before ten one, um. Pre New Hoff, that is the engineering firm, paid them for uh working on the terminal study grant. Um other than that, it's just. Day to day stuff. If anybody has any questions, you can ask me anytime, but uh. The only other item that we had for tonight um is Dennis's manager report, and I handed a copy out to you. So you can follow along with him.
Well, um. I don't know, I can go through it in detail, kind of what's been happening this month, but. Couple of price and major things there, uh. When we put in the new fuel farm, we went unbranded as far as. Uh where we could get our uh fuel at, prior to that, we always used to have fuel to get fuel for the airport. Well, one of the companies we added was Epic, uh which was uh Epic Fuels. Well, effective uh October one, they got bought out by uh. World Fuel Services. So we've been working with them to uh get pricing. Uh through uh World Fuel Services. At the same time, um. We were um. Working with uh, well. One of their sales reps for Epic Fuels got let go, and that person went to um AEG Fuels. So I've been setting up pricing through AEG Fuels. And at the same time, we just got some pricing set up through Titan Fuels, so there's a lot of companies that provide fuel. So. But uh. Uh we, we need to buy some Jet A, uh. We're down to um less than a thousand gallon tanks, so. Uh so I'm trying to find multi sources and compare the prices, uh so. Um. So anyway, hopefully. Most of all, the pricing comes in on Tuesday, so we'll see, we'll probably order Jet A, so. Um. But there is some variation in pricing, if you get the price today, it's like uh maybe eight cents less. Than air fuel, but on eight thousand gallons, it adds up, so.
Yeah.
Um. So um this is kind of just the activity that kind of happened, we didn't sell a lot of. Jet A in October, um. The statistics and stuff. Just sneeze here.
Excuse me. True, yeah.
Um. The statistics on page two there kind of gets into our activity and stuff, and if you look there, we're like four thousand. And if you look there, we're like four thousand gallons ahead from same time last year on the Jet A. And we're about almost fifty-six hundred gallons ahead on the hundred low lead compared to the previous year. Um.
Fuel farm is starting to pay off, isn't it?
Yeah, well, it's, it's available twenty-four hours a day, so uh, versus when we had to have.
We knew that.
Yeah, yeah, after five years, so, um. Anyway, so that, that's uh, good news. Uh, we did um, oh, we've been cutting brush on some ditch banks and some other stuff, uh, working with Carmen Tree Service. Uh, there was fifty-six trees. I think we're down to like ten trees that need to be cut. Uh, ten or twelve. Um, so he's been allocating one day a week, just come because, you know, and we just work with the property owners on that. But I think the last two weeks, we had weather issues, you know?
Yeah.
Real windy, cut trees, real windy, especially if you're around power lines and stuff.
Five thirty mile an hour, no time to.
Right. And we did make one payment to them, which was I think about forty-three percent of the payment, uh, they'd already done more work than that, so. Um, so other than that, uh, uh, we've had some soil come out, uh, some topsoil brought out and we've been filling in some ruts and stuff that's been around. Uh, we got that seeded first part of the month there. Um, we, uh, of course, the underground storage tank removal, we had that bid review meeting on the fourteenth of October. Um, and then, uh, so we hope, uh, I haven't got a firm date when they're going to plan to do it here, but it's probably in the next couple of weeks. Uh, we had to fill out some paperwork, get that into them, uh, to follow up on that. Um, so I've been in contact with them, just haven't got a firm date yet. There's some stuff we have to do with uh, Michigan Department of uh, under Eagle, um, um, prior to them starting, so. Um, see what else uh, kind of been happening. Um, for the uh, the thirty-first of October here, we did get a notice from um, Michigan MDOT that they have appropriated four million dollars for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. And there's uh, four different areas, capital development, revenue generating, equipment, permit and maintenance. So those, that's grant money and uh, money has, or applications have to be in by December fifth. So some of those we, uh, we'll have to do a little brainstorming of maybe what would qualify? And maybe, uh, for example, maybe we would uh, try to get a bid in for paying the old hangers there, the rubs and the sides.
Be great, yeah.
Whether it'll get approved or not, my guess is there's only four million. Uh, so smaller projects might get approved compared to one big project, for example.
Yeah.
They'd rather.
Give out a little, quite a bit.
Yeah, to everyone.
I was thinking, maybe even if we could find one project for each of the four categories, so if one of the categories doesn't hit as hard by all the other airports, I say, okay, we can give Gresh at this.
Right, we ought to get, maybe.
Something.
Get something, maybe, so.
Pick four and hope for one.
Right, right. So I've been starting a list of potential things, so we'll have to figure out, do a little brainstorming stuff, uh.
Next advisory meeting, hopefully we'll, you'll have a.
That's all that's left and we'll be able to go with it.
Right, yeah. I could come to some consensus here.
Signing goods.
Uh, in November here, we already had uh, Summit Companies, they do our annual fire extinguisher testing. Uh, so there's uh, five fire extinguishers and the terminal and fuel farm. And then three-point, we have uh, five also, so they're going to build a separate, just like they have passed through
Yeah.
City of Alma and stuff. We did have a Northern Jet was in on the second. Uh, and they overnighted, next morning they were going to leave at uh, nine o'clock, but um, there was frost on the wings and you can't pick off the frost, so they they had to wait till ten-thirty before they could get off the ground to say.
We don't carry an ethylene black on a spray on them.
Yeah, we don't have uh, TK, TK uh, stuff at the airport, so. Uh, and we don't have a hangar that we could put them in to warm it up. And they did come back yesterday, uh, three forty-five.
Wow.
So.
The company, is it a company, is there, there's?
Just uh, individuals that use Northern Jet quite a bit.
Okay.
So, um.
And Northern Jet is like a, like a.
Charter service.
Or?
Yeah, they just, uh, they're out of Grand Rapids. Uh, they merged with another company in Florida, so now they have a a bigger fleet
Oh.
of airplanes. So, uh, the planes that were in the last couple of days have been from the other company, but still under Northern Jet, so.
Well, that's nice.
Yeah. Uh, jets normally want us to uh, uh, have somebody at the airport, so. Um, so normally on weekends, as much we wouldn't, wouldn't normally be there on a Sunday, but uh, but we were there, so. Um, so anyway, um, other than that, uh, uh, statistics are there. This is through the month end stuff. Uh, we already did the billing and stuff for our priority cards and uh, this is our how many gallons we've sold. And uh, uh, and then the next couple of documents are this actual announcement of this four million funding. And uh, there's a couple of pages that outlines it and then there's a page there that we have to fill out to um, to submit any declarations or try to get some grant money, so. Um, I don't know if you have any other questions or?
A question on um, with the whole Jet A and our new fuel system and everything, there's uh, all this talk about biofuels and decarbonizing and all that kind of stuff. Is our equipment, if that comes to fruition where that's going to be the new kind of norm, does our new equipment handle that kind of stuff? Because I know sometimes fuel equipment either can or can't handle.
Well, on the low lead side, they've been, they've been doing this study and they, they put a lot of money toward companies to develop an alternative for the hundred low lead because they just have lead out, they want to get away from that.
Yep.
Um, and it gets into a wide range of uh, testing because you've got all these existing engines and that probably need lead, so.
All the way back to nineteen oh eight.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Right.
But there, but there is some alternatives, but it's quite, quite more per gallon as you would imagine because they don't have capacity yet to fulfill everybody's needs. There's some that have kind of converted to it. California is, is requesting they have a date when all their general aviation airports have to convert to the new fuel.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Everything they can make in the country, probably just California.
Yeah. Oh, they can't even, they can't even fulfill that. So it's kind of crazy to make a rule that you don't have the capacity. It's kind of like you know, the, like AV, saying, you know, you don't have capacity to maybe handle it, but. So as I understand it, you could get a hundred low lead and then uh, this alternative fuel could be pumped right in, mixed in and just
Okay.
everything's the same, so.
Good.
So that's stuff that I know at this point.
Good.
There, there's still talking about alternative fuels on the Jet A side. Um, and I would think that would be similar. You know, so, I mean, like the uh,
Big jet liners that are already flying using these
Yeah.
you know, biodiesel or bios that are made with soybean oil and all this. So I mean, it's gotta be because you get to Indonesia and you got to fuel up, they're gonna.
Right, right.
It's not gonna have the same fuels.
Yeah, they, well, there's a lot of different blends of Jet A.
Jet A, yeah.
Government and stuff is all different too.
Yep.
So, uh, from that perspective, you just, you know, I'm sure that I mean, even our crap dusting airplanes, the turbines, they, they, they burn kerosene, they burn Jet A, they burn a variety of stuff.
Yeah.
Oh, they all work, so. Um, I don't, I, I haven't heard any issues along that.
This was hoping, that's what I was hoping is that you're not going to have to switch something out.
No, third tank.
Yeah, okay.
I know some airports, California are doing putting in tanks that for the alternative fuel, you know, as a kind of a transitional piece for the people who want it, want to pay for it, so. But uh, all right, so I don't know if you have any questions about data or stuff where we're at, so.
It's not, thank you, Dennis.
Right.
Thanks, Doc.
That would conclude our meeting unless anyone else got anything else. And I'll make, I'm just saying that because I'll make a motion that we go back into uh, regular session.
Moved by George, supported by Tim, to leave the airport meeting and go back into the regular meeting. Any public comment?
I have nothing earth-shattering to tell us.
No, just some dogs and chickens, so. Yeah. No, killing about twenty chickens.
Oh.
Yeah, yes, that's why I'm a little late.
Oh, that's so sad.
One more sleep, one more sleep till tomorrow, so.
There you go. There you go.
Hey. In the motion to go into a closed session.
They can go into closed session for courthouse security.
Yeah, sure. Going to request that Gresham County employees are allowed to stay in for this, since it will be a Gresham County employee.
Yeah.
Moved by Tim, supported by Steve, to go into a closed session. Consider courthouse security.
Get you out early tonight, Dennis. We're going to get you out of here early.
Okay. We are back in regular session at five twenty-five PM.
I saw move that we approve the Gresham County courthouse security policy and procedure as presented before.
Moved by Steve, supported by Tim, to accept the courthouse security policy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who's nay? Motion carried. New courthouse security policy.
Thank you to everybody that's put a lot of work into it, since I know that's been a lot of odd people, lots of hours.
Wait a minute, are we going to ask Angie about the election?
All right.
Oh. It's over. Nine-day early voting's over.
How many do we have?
Three thousand fifty.
Three thousand?
Three thousand fifty-five.
That was beautiful, super.
So we.
How many eligible voters, Gresh?
Over twenty-seven thousand.
How many?
Over twenty-seven thousand. I think in twenty twenty, we had like seventeen thousand, five hundred something voted. So, yeah, so we've, uh, we have about, we have close to fifty-five hundred
Hundred percent.
V at ballots out there as well.
A little, a little over ten percent.
We've got eight thousand people voting early, probably, of the seventeen.
Wow.
So hopefully there won't be long lines on Election Day, but hopefully there will as far as the big winner now.
Oh, yeah.
People out there to vote, so.
It's cool with it.
Yeah, so. One more day.
Yay. Hope it's all over.
We'll have two more days.
More a year and it could be a long.
For years, yeah. I don't want, right?
Okay.
It just seems like what's the computers that they have that
It wouldn't, right?
We should know by eleven o'clock.
Well, but with um, so with military and overseas ballots, we have to wait six days to give them a chance to come back to the local clerks.
There's three or four states that lawsuits moving on.
As long as they are postmarked by Election Day, that they put it in the mail, we're giving them six days total. And so in May of twenty twenty-three, we actually had one in Fulton Township, um, um, that, that arrived on the Saturday. I think the election was May third. And it arrived the Saturday after the election, but it was postdated April twenty-ninth. So they had it in the mail, but it just took that extra long time to get to the clerk. So we were able to add that to the count.
Does it make a difference?
Back. It could, well.
Chip, it could make a big difference.
Could make a difference, so, yeah, yeah. So every vote count, every votes in.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, being a township, big difference.
So, um, along with absentee ballots, the local clerks have three days. Any absentee ballot envelope that they receive on Election Day, they have three days to fix a signature that doesn't necessarily look like your signature. If it doesn't look like your signature, they have to try to contact you by phone, email or mail to come in and fix it so that we can count that ballot as well, so.
So, if Trump's ahead in Michigan by a hundred thousand votes, uh, the attorney general in Michigan could say, oh, and we're not going to call it because the votes I don't know how to count them, and that's what you're talking about, right?
Probably. I don't know that they would do that if it's a hundred thousand.
Well, they might.
In twenty twenty, wasn't it a ten thousand?
A hundred thousand.
Ten thousand vote difference?
Take them a day or two.
That was.
Or if it's, well, I, I'm old fashioned, but I don't think that people should vote. Really? Because they're dead.
But really?
Yeah.
Oh.
But what about the six?
You're not, you're kind of close-minded there, Tim.
Return it.
I think it should be.
And then die for the election. So if you voted for absentee ballot.
Well, yeah, in that case.
Oh, no, but the boss says we still.
I know how my dad would vote, so he, he's okay, he can vote. He's only been.
We adjourn and then we can stay after and talk about this.
I come in. I adjourned, I adjourned. It's low. Moved by Jan, supported by Tim, stand adjourned at four thirty, five thirty, excuse me.
Thirty oh what?